I will call the regular meeting of the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
White? Tralka?
Here.
And let's have a moment of silence. In particular, I'd like all of us to remember the family of Sherri Baller and the family of Trooper Jim Smith. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to receive the agenda. Proposed or received?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The agenda is received and approved. Public comments. Do we have anybody in the boardroom that would like to provide public comment? No one? Do we have anybody online or on Zoom that would like to provide public comment? Funny, I see Tim Jamison's name up there and I keep thinking he's a reporter. Claims and payments. Mr. Perry?
Yes, this week's expenditures total $339,559.59. The larger department secondary roads $47,435. Department of Correctional Services $10,00934. Health Department $13,00934. Sheriff's Department $196,465. Everything looked normal.
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution at the Board of Supervisors, approve expenditures, and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Item number four. Do we have any project updates from department heads and elected officials? Kathy?
Good morning. Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. I wanted to give you a status report or an update on the Wheeler Road Bridge. I believe I told you earlier, well, late last fall, early winter, we had to close the bridge due to us being unable to plow the snow. And I told you that we would go out and re-inspect the bridge and have our structural consultant take a look at the bridge as well. Ryan went out last week and Callum Burns, our structural engineer, they were out there very briefly as well. They have reviewed the report. And I wanted to go over some of those findings with you. It'll just take a few minutes. Next slide, Kim. So, as you recall, this is a structure that is east of, just directly east of Dunkerton, the community of Dunkerton, and it's north of Dunkerton Road, approximately quarter of a mile. We did close it last fall due to us being unable to plow the snow. It was posted at three tons at that time. That is the lowest a bridge can be posted. It's not legal to post it for anything less than three tons. It must be closed then. As I did tell you, Ryan has been out there and just reviewed it. We have been getting many, many calls lately in the past week or so, you know, what's going on with the bridge? When are we going to open it or tell us what's happening? We have decided that it must, it should still remain closed just due to the deteriorating structure of the bridge. We think some of this, some of the findings that I'll tell you about, there are still components, there are still beams underneath the concrete deck, of course. Those are exhibiting quite a bit of corrosion for a gravel road bridge, and we think that it's probably due to the fact that it's so close to a paved road, Dunkerton Road, for example. We sand and salt Dunkerton Road on a regular basis in the winter months. Some of that salt is probably being tracked up there onto the structure, coming through the poor deck and corroding those steel beams. Next slide, Kim. So, I just wanted to show you a few slides of the current members of the beam, the components of the bridge beams and the bridge. So, these are some findings. These are the underside of the bridge. You can see that the steel beams are experiencing quite a bit of corrosion. You can see salt percolating through that concrete deck. That's what some of that white material is on the underside of the deck. It is causing quite a bit of corrosion on the steel beams, and that does result in section loss of the steel beams, thereby reducing their load-carrying capacities of the beams themselves. The structure was built in 1948, so it's approximately 70 years old. Next slide, Kim. This was a picture taken of the deck. I believe this was last summer, so it's not quite a year old, but we have had to patch the deck numerous times over the years, and we're throwing asphalt into the deck. So, this is not a waterproof type of situation at all. Water is continuing to flow through or percolate through that bridge deck, taking sand and salt, salt in particular with it, causing that corrosion, causing the steel and the concrete deck to corrode as well. So, some of the findings are, again, under moisture and cracking on the underside in three, four, and five spans, three, four, and five, and it's a five-span structure. There's spalling on the bridge deck. So, it's in poor condition. It's rated as poor. The deck is and the substructure as well. Next slide, Kim. So, this is a look at, again, the poor timber pile, condition of the timber pile. There are multiple timber pile on the structure. There's probably 50 or 60 timber pile on the structure just due to the five spans. And the timber pile are exhibiting section loss, meaning pieces of the pile are missing. When the timber are hit with a hammer, they are hollow inside. So, there are multiple ways that these timber pile are failing. It's not just looking at them, it's listening to how they sound when they are struck with a hammer. And you can see in the lower picture there, there are pieces of the pile missing, small pieces, at the waterline. So, the moisture inside the timber pile is always present just to it being at the waterline. So, all these factors reduce the carrying capacity of these timber piles. Last slide, Kim. So, our current conclusion is that we are not going to reopen this structure. It is not probably worthwhile, it is not cost-effective to repair this structure. In the past, we have been allowed, we have been able to repair some bridges that have timber pile by cutting holes through the deck and replacing those timber pile. Many cases, the deck is in good condition. This deck is not in good condition at all. It has multiple poor ratings due to the components. It is not in our five-year plan to replace this structure, as I've told you before. And we are, at this time, we will be notifying the residents that we are not reopening the structure and it's permanently closed at this time. And I want you to know that, and we'll send out a letter in the next two or three days if that's what you want. I assume that's what you would like us to pursue. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Can I answer any questions?
How many bridges do we have in the county again? 150?
We have approximately 238.
Okay. How come this wasn't in the five-year plan? We didn't realize how bad it was? We missed it or?
So, a lot of it has to do with, if you're familiar with that part of the county, in, I believe, 2013 or 2012, we replaced Nesbit Road Bridge. So, we call it the Sister Bridge. It's parallel to Nesbit and Wheeler are parallel roads. They're a mile apart off of Dunkerton Road. We had a public meeting approximately in, I want to say, 2011 or 2012, somewhere in that timeframe. We told those residents that it's most likely, we are not sure that we are going to be able to afford to replace both structures. We did replace the Nesbit Road Bridge at a cost of, at that time, it was $600,000. We did have some environmental concerns. We had to identify mussels and relocate mussels in that stream. We feel that we would have many of the same complications with this structure as well. We felt that due to the short, in our opinion, the short detour route on the Wheeler Road Bridge, if it were to be closed, residents can use the new Nesbit Road Bridge. We felt that that was probably a good compromise. We never said we weren't going to replace it, but we've always kind of moved ahead as if, it has been a low priority to replace the structure just due to the brand-new bridge a mile to the east.
Very good.
You remember a few years ago, Kathy, we took a bus tour around the county?
Right.
This was one of the bridges, wasn't it, along with the Sister Bridge?
Yes, exactly. Right.
It really lasted, it was bad then.
Yeah, it was rated, it was posted then, and it's obviously been slowly deteriorating. And we just feel at this point, it's not a safe thing to reopen it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other department heads or elected officials?
Good morning, Board. Mike Hendrickson, Director with Black Hawk County Conservation. I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on our park system. Spring's here, and although the weather has slipped a little bit on us, temperature-wise, we had some really beautiful weather a couple of weeks ago, kind of got everybody in the mood, campers and all that kind of stuff. But we have gone ahead and moved forward. We don't see too much weather that's threatening water lines and things like that. So, here's kind of a rundown of where we are. All of our campgrounds are open. We have a few water systems that aren't turned on yet, but they will be very quickly. Big Woods Lake Campground, we will open that shower facility by the weekend. That building's somewhat protected. There's one night we're still a little nervous about, but I think we're fine. Hickory Hills, you know, their shower facility is the storm shelter, and so it's well-protected. He is fully open at Hickory Hills. McFarlane will be fully open with their shower facilities by this weekend. And so, we're off and moving, and we've had quite a good number of campers already with some of these nicer weekends. So, you know, park systems are greening up. It's really a great time to get out there, and the public, they're back using things, you know, a lot. So, we're happy that we're ready for them. And we'll just throw this note out. You may not remember, maybe you do, but in our FY21 budget, capital budget, we are going to do the overlay on Hickory Hills Campground Road. That is now scheduled for May the 10th. So, we will be closing that campground for just a few days. It won't take long for them to do that work, but we'll really, really improve that roadway and the road going up the hill to the shower facility. So, that's scheduled right now for May the 10th. I do want to throw out a huge thank you to our engineering department. They helped us get those plans put together, and they helped us put together the bid package. So, Kathy and Ryan and Chad, we just can't thank those people enough for what they did to help us with that. So, it's going to be a great improvement to Hickory Hills Campground, and we're very happy about that. So, with that, I would answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any others? Any other department head or elected official that would like to provide an update? Item number five, approval of the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The minutes are approved for March 24th and April 6th. Consent agenda. Mr., any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Item number seven, contracts and agreements. There is a resolution that the best bid received from Security Chimney in the amount of $20,500 for the replacement of the boiler stack at Pinecrest Building be approved as recommended by Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent. It looks like there were two bids submitted, one from Security Chimney for $20,500 and one from Durvent Incorporated for $23,000.
Rory, you used either one of these before, companies?
Yeah, actually, just to give you a little background, this is for the Pinecrest facility. This is to replace the complete flu on that system along with the stack on the exterior of the building. When we originally budgeted this project, we looked at a budget that included the material and outsourcing labor. When we did the boiler project over at the jail, we used this product, and our staff worked alongside the outsourced staff as they're installing this product, and we quickly realized this is something we could easily do in-house, that our staff is fully capable of installing this product. And so far, we've had great success with it. So, we're looking forward to putting this in over at Pinecrest and leaving that problem that we've had over there for quite some time with that flu.
So, your recommendation is Security Chimney?
Security Chimney, yes, please.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the resolution. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please, unless there are any more comments or questions. There are none. Mr. Veder?
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Item number eight, we have a resolution to allow public access to the passport acceptance facility on Saturday, May 1st, from 9:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. noon, as recommended by Sandy Smith, Black Hawk County Recorder.
So moved.
Second.
Sandy, would you like to add anything? Great idea.
Good morning, Board. Sandy Smith, county recorder. Although officially, the U.S. government is still recommending citizens use extreme caution when traveling abroad, just because of the unpredictable nature of the pandemic, we are seeing an increase in inquiries and calls and people wanting to renew their passports and wanting to apply. And we think this will be a great opportunity for individuals and families with young children who cannot come during regular courthouse hours to come on a Saturday morning. So, we're going to use very limited staff, myself, my two deputies, and my two certified passport agents.
Do you have to be in Black Hawk County? Can it be another county that can come here and get their passport?
Yes. We actually had planned on doing this last year when the election office was open for their extended hours for early voting, but the government stopped processing routine passports, so we couldn't do that. So, that's something we could look at again in the future.
I would get ahold of Kayla and Dana for security to set it up for that day.
Okay.
It's about two weeks out, so they'll need to know.
And I'll let you know how it goes. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Veder?
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Item 8B, a resolution that the suspension requested by Anthony and Katina Tucker on Texas owed for 2019 installments in the amount of $1,518 for parcel number 891325178012 be approved pursuant to Iowa Code 427.8, and the county treasurer be authorized and directed to adjust their, adjust her records accordingly.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder?
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Item 8C, a motion that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Kim Veder, Information Technology Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same to purchase Office 365 licensing and implementation for $71,338 from Lift Off.
If you have any questions, um...
Any questions for Kim?
Kim, just one question. I know in your email, you had this outlined quite a bit, but you missed the upgrades for the office, Microsoft Office, I think. And do you have a timeline for when some of this will all kind of happen? Again, could you review that quickly?
Yeah. When I worked or met, talked to the Lift Off people, they have a very good implementation plan where they'll meet with us once or twice a week, go through the setup and design, and as part of that, we'll be able to take care of the system ourselves. And so, it was like 15 sessions. So, they were willing or said that we probably could schedule the week after it was approved. So, I would assume, and as best I know, in four to five weeks, would be able to start moving the email accounts over and making sure that we got a plan for getting the installs of the updated office software.
Thank you.
Would somebody like to, Chris?
I just offer a motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no. It is approved.
Thank you.
Shouldn't that have been a resolution, right?
Oh.
Spend that kind of money?
You know, that used to be the, the process of the board that something that spend significant money on, it's a resolution. But I don't know when, what choices are made in making these motions or resolutions.
Yeah. My question was, shouldn't that have been a resolution? I always thought the rule of thumb, certain dollar amount, it's a resolution.
We clearly, the call vote, if somebody asked for it.
No, we've already had a vote, but I'd rather, I'd rather see it as a resolution.
Okay. The, well, I'll give a little bit. So, the policy that I'm, that we actually reference when we do something like this is, A, is it budgeted? Yes or no? And B, is it over-budget? Yes or no? Because this was under-budget and it was budgeted, that's why it's a motion. We can look at that moving forward, but that was kind of the criteria that we look at when we put motion or resolution. So...
Yeah, I think when you're spending that kind of a dollar amount, it should be a resolution, roll call.
Okay, we can look at that.
Yeah. I like the idea, too, of the resolution, just because last week, we tabled it because there were some concerns and comments that came up. So, it just makes clarification, I guess, for all of us to do it by the resolution. So, I put preference. Thank you.
Is there a threshold that anybody prefers on the amount spent?
I, I thought years ago, there was a threshold that it was either a resolution if you spent X amount of dollars. We can do some research on that, but I'm assuming the board can set whatever they want.
Seems as if like $10,000 in my book is a good threshold. I'll look it up.
The real question is whether it's changed at this point. But, yeah.
Because I think I can pay somebody on Facebook Messenger up to $9,999.9. Seems like a pretty standard threshold.
You can deposit that amount, too.
Item number 8D, a resolution that the applications for property tax exemption under authority of the Iowa Property Tax Natural Resources Exemption and Assessment Law, including open prairie and wildlife habitat pursuant to Iowa Code Section 427.1, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by T.G. Coganfield, ICA Black Hawk County Assessor. It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Any questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Item number 8E, a resolution to approve transferring to the City of Evansdale title of, title to the county conservation real estate known as Aspear Natural Area by quit claim deed and to authorize Conservation Director Mike Hendrickson to sign all documentation necessary to accomplish this transfer.
Mike, this has gone through the Conservation Board?
Yes, yes. It was on our meeting last Thursday night, and they did approve, um, moving forward.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Any other comments or questions? And Mike, Trident has reviewed this as well, and?
That's correct. We've, the City of Evansdale is going to be putting in a stormwater installation there, one way or the other. It just made sense to transfer title, given the limited size and the fact that we don't have other conservation area budding in.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Thank you, second.
Yes. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz? Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Item 8F is a motion that the appointment of Karen Aggie as a representative for the Black Hawk County Planning and Zoning Board be approved effective April 13th, 2021, with a term expiration date of 6/30/2025.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. White and I interviewed Karen last week, and we felt that she would add a good perspective and be a good fit for our planning and zoning board.
I think we're still in need of one more on planning and zoning and two for Board of Adjustment, so...
And I was provided with two more names, and I plan to reach out to them and ask them if they'd be willing to apply.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Ms. Aggie is approved. Item number 8G, discussion in regard to county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I hope everybody's doing well. So, we're making progress on vaccination. We have one major news, our announcement today. We received information from both the CDC and also the Iowa Department of Public Health advising that all Iowa vaccine providers pause administration of the Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID-19 vaccine until more details are confirmed. The CDC and FDA are reviewing data involving six reported cases of a rare and severe type of a blood clot in individuals after receiving the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. Right now, these adverse events appear to be extremely rare. So, that's where we're at currently for today. So, we have already made contact with our local partners very early this morning, asking them to pause on any clinic that they have that has to do with the Johnson &amp; Johnson until further notice. And I will update you when I get more detailed information. But as of this moment, this is where we're at. But again, we continue to make progress on vaccinations. Yeah, so that's all I have for this morning.
Well, and I know I encourage people to get the vaccination. I got my first shot, and people are complimenting me on how much younger I look. So, that should be incentive alone to get it. There are people who have decided not to get it. That's their choice. I'm disappointed in the people that have criticized me for getting it. So, but I encourage people to get it. I think it's going to help us get through this dilemma. And, you know, I want to get to a point where we can drop the mask. I don't want to rush it, but I want to be prudent. I want to be educated, and I, two years from now, I don't want to be wearing a mask unless it's situational circumstances where we're in another pandemic or another season of illness.
Yeah, and thank you for that, Supervisor Tralka. You know, as of April 12th, more than 6.8 million doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine have been administered in the U.S. When we look at these six cases, they've all occurred among women between the ages of 18 and 48, and symptoms occur six to 13 days after vaccination. So, I thank you for that. I do want to encourage people to continue to get vaccinated when it's their turn, and I appreciate, I appreciate what you said.
Any other comments or concerns, questions in regard to COVID-19?
I just echo the encouragement to the public to get the vaccine. That is our ticket out of this pandemic, and that includes everything from math and everything. So, the sooner we can get it, the less opportunity there is for variants to be created. I had read yesterday that the B11 variant, known as the UK variant, is fairly prominent in Iowa. Luckily, our vaccines are effective against it, but the longer we go... Luckily, our vaccines are effective against it, but the longer we go without a critical mass of people vaccinated, just the more opportunity this has to mutate. And so I encourage people to just get it done as soon as there's an opportunity presented to you. And I know that the board will keep, and the Health Department, everybody will keep sharing those opportunities with the public.
Thank you.
All right. Item number nine, any reports or information from the board? Yesterday, I was, I went to People's Clinic there in, they, they're having a capital project campaign, and they explained to me what their plan is and their expansion plans and stuff. They told me that Supervisor Schwartz had been over there, and they're going to reach out to all the board supervisors. They've been reaching out to several elected officials just so that we're aware of their plans. The one thing I'm always concerned about is duplication of services. I don't want to see organizations in our community duplicating the services of another organization. And that's one of the first things People's Clinic brought up with me is, they, they don't. They fill a void in the community, and I know they have a dialogue with many different entities, including our hospitals and public health, and it looks like a promising capital campaign.
I think it's really exciting to echo some of that Supervisor Chalka. I think part of the American Rescue Plan included a direct allocation to these, these certified community health centers, including People's, that's, that's making the expansion possible, I think even sooner than they thought originally, which is really good. I'll just share that tomorrow, I'm, I've been asked to present with the, through the UNI C triple E Center for Energy and Environmental Education. They're participating in this online event called Global Dialogues. It's going to include universities from all across the country, and they are featuring a couple local things. They've asked me to talk a little bit about our accomplishments here in Blackhawk County with, with our solar project, as well as some of the watershed management stuff that they work on as well, just as examples of, of local government in action on climate change. So it'll be a nice feature for our, our work that we can be very proud of, that will be seen by lots of young people across the country.
All right, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?